Herndon Town Council Public Session, October 23, 2018.
Good evening. Welcome to our meeting this evening. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This evening Vice Mayor Baker is out of town on a business trip to New Orleans, so we're jealous of her, but she will not be here this evening. For those who are interested in the public hearing on the appeal of the Heritage Preservation Review Board's decision on HPRB number 1813, the appellant has requested that the council continue this public hearing again until November 13th. But since this public hearing was properly advertised, I will open the public hearing at the appropriate time later in the evening if there's anyone that is here to speak on that matter. First up, we have an approval of, I believe, just one set of minutes. This is for the October 9 public hearing minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve made by Councilmember Cunningham and seconded by Councilmember McKenna. Is there discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. And that motion carries. We have several presentations this evening. We are honored to do this. First of all, we have a certificate of appreciation to recognize Lee Duranco, Herndon Police Department, on the occasion of his retirement. I'll recognize Chief DeBoer for the -- oh, there. What an entrance. I will recognize Chief DeBoer to provide an introduction and background on Lee Duranco's service with the town, and then we'll go from there. Welcome, Chief.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I didn't realize you weren't here. I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is it on?
Madam Mayor and Town Council, thank you for recognizing me to speak on behalf of Corporal Lee Duranco, who is retiring today with -- actually retired in July.
I wonder if it's properly -- there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Retired in July. We are now just able to coordinate a ceremony for both Lee and Kevin tonight, and it was our honor to do so when we could have everybody here to celebrate with us together. Lee spent approximately 29 years with the Herndon Police Department, and, you know, we just had a very nice ceremony for both Lee and Kevin both, and talked about their careers. And, you know, what I just want to highlight with Lee is just the time he spent during my tenure here, which is the last six-plus years, Lee was -- spent a tremendous amount of that time working in our hiring and training office, and as I had stated before, was really one of the most critical jobs that we do here, is trying to find the right people to wear the HPD badge to serve our community. And Lee did an exceptional job in that role, scrutinizing everybody who came through as an applicant, and really with his gift of gab and his excellent investigative skills that he's had over the years, Lee was able to really get to the truth behind and find out who these people are that we're looking at hiring, and helped me and my staff make very, very good decisions on who we bring onboard to work for the town and to serve this community. I can't thank him enough. Lee spent a lot of time in patrol, on and off. He also spent a tremendous amount of time working in investigations. And just about everywhere Lee went, Lee was not only well-liked, but he cared about the people he worked for and the people he served. And as I said earlier, to serve 30-plus years here, as both of these officers have done, in an exemplary fashion, is just an amazing feat. So, we congratulate him. We're sorry to see him go, but we really wish him the best of luck in his second career, which he's immensely enjoying, I understand. Earlier today, and I just want to show the community that's here, one of the things we do at HPD is we do honor our officers when they retire. You know, it's very normal for them. We hand them a retirement badge, but we also give them a shadow box. And the shadow box really is a display of all the things that they were involved in while they were police officers here. I'm going to grab Lee's real quick.
This is Lee's shadow box. And this is really an encapsulation of all that Lee was a part of when he's here. Lee is here with his family, and many of our colleagues that he has worked closely with over the years. So, we are just -- we're sorry to see Lee go, but we're ecstatic for somebody who has spent so much time here and to retire and move on to a very happy and healthy life. So, we wish him the best of luck.
Okay. Do you want to do the presentation and then have people speak, or do you want me to call on people who might like to speak ahead of time?
It's your show, Maggie. Usually I let the mayor do this, but the town of Herndon also is recommending you, Lee, is giving you this certificate of appreciation for all of your service here. And I'll read this: "For more than 29 years of loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of the town of Herndon, and for your outstanding contributions to the quality of life in the Herndon community. September 1989 to July 2018."
Thank you. So, I was going to call on anyone from the audience that would like to make any comments on the occasion of his retirement, and if the council has any comments, we'll follow, and then we'll all come down for a presentation. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward? I think they may have said it all ahead of time, and they know there are cameras here now. So, you got the good stories at 5:30. Is there anybody that would like to come down? Okay, well, comments from council? Anyone? Nope. Mr. Kaufman.
Corporal Duranco, thank you for your service to the town of Herndon. It was excellent service. It was my privilege to work with you as the town attorney, and I wish you good luck in your retirement or in your future endeavors.
So, is there anyone else that would like to make any comments? Ms. Friedrichs.
So, we had not met before this evening, but I got to hear some very interesting stories about you. The pyrotechnic one, I'm going to follow up on and find out where that one came from.
We all know that story.
But I do want to wish you well, and I know everybody else on council is very grateful for your time and grateful for your service, and thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Olem.
Well, you were serving the town when I moved in. I don't know what we'll do without you now. So, I've been here the whole time you've been serving. So, good luck to you, and I'll miss seeing you around, but maybe you'll visit.
Thank you. And I said this previously, but I want to say it tonight in front of all of you. I am grateful to all of the men and women of the Herndon Police Department. It's not an easy time to be in law enforcement right now. We have great men and women who care about the community. I hope that Lee's going to tell the story that he told about someone who's here this evening, which is a testament to the Herndon Police Department and what they do in our community. And knowing that you played such a role in the hiring process is so important. We -- I know that our police department is super choosy about who we are willing to hand our badge to, and so I thank you for the role that you played in making sure we made those good decisions over the years. I would like to invite down Mr. Town Attorney or Ms. Town Attorney or Mr. Town Manager. Any comments? Okay, I'm all over the place tonight. So, I would like to invite down everyone from the dais for the presentation, Lee and your family, Chief DeBoer, anybody from HPD who is here that would like to come down. We would love to have you. And if you'd like to make some remarks afterwards, we would love to hear from you.
Family? Pretend like you guys like each other.
So, I really appreciate the plaque, and I appreciate all the recognition that I'm receiving. Just like to say, it was a pleasure serving you, the town of Herndon citizens, for all these years. I had a really great time and met a lot of people and taken a lot of friendships from this town. Town Council, same thing. It was a pleasure serving you and the town. I have a lot of good memories. Herndon's a really good place to work. You don't realize it until you leave. But it's a really good place to work. You guys got it downright, and you're doing it right. One of the stories I'll share, since you wanted me to share it.
Thank you.
Roberto, come on up here.
Oh, sorry, Roberto.
Sorry to do this to him, but--
I'm not sorry. This is exactly what HPD is all about.
So, I want to share a story with you. This is like my brother here, Roberto. I've known Roberto since he was 10-years-old. He used to run around there, Dulles Park Court. He came over here from El Salvador with his mother and his brother, and I really took a liking to him. He's a ladies' man, slick back hair. 10-years-old, he was a good kid. But he ran around with some kids that weren't so good, and I always tried to keep him on his right path. And, you know, as years went by, we kind of went our different ways, but I then ran into him at the festival, and he made me realize how important I was to his life. He introduced me to his wife, his kids. He called me over and said, in so many words, I can't remember, but, "Hey, this is Officer Lee. He's the guy who used to keep me straight. He's a good guy. Remember this guy." So, you know, he really made me feel important that day. And, you know, the good thing of the story is, I guess, and I didn't say it earlier, the kids he used to run around with, a couple of them are dead, a couple of them in jail. And so, he's a proud owner of a business. His brother serves in the US Army 22-years now, and he's really making a good name for himself, and proud of him. He's like my brother. So-- So, with that being said, again, thank you for the opportunity to serve. I will see you at the festival. If you want to be on a segue--
He won't be on a segue.
I'll be participating as you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for sharing that story. So, next up, we have another certificate of appreciation to recognize Kevin Knuckles from the Herndon Police Department on the occasion of his retirement, and Chief DeBoer is going to tell us a little bit about Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. We are celebrating, as we spoke earlier, two retirements tonight. Both of them left in July. And Kevin Knuckles is with the town almost 32-years. Unlike Lee, I did cross paths with Kevin a little earlier in my career when I was a Fairfax County Police Officer. I met Kevin 27-years ago. He was assigned from HPD to the Fairfax County Narcotics Unit, and I was assigned there as a young detective in Fairfax. So, I actually had the privilege and the honor of working with Kevin a long time ago. Who knew I'd ever end up here overseeing Kevin? Kevin likes to joke about that now, but it's been a wonderful path. Kevin, back then, was known as a detective, as a very quiet, but very knowledgeable and helpful individual, and his legacy really has only grown over the years here. Kevin was a corporal here at HPD, but eventually took a step back because he wanted to be a detective, and he has spent the majority of his career as a detective with HPD, and has just been a rock for us in that section. He has a vast amount of experience, not only as an investigator, but certainly as a polygrapher, too. And we have missed his skills enough that we are bringing him back to do polygraphs for us on a part-time basis. But Kevin has been exceptional. He's a man of few words, so when Kevin speaks, we do listen. But his knowledge is not easily replaced. He cared deeply about every case he worked, whether it was a simple larceny or burglary or violent crime. Kevin treated his victims all the same, because he knew those cases were important to every individual, despite what the circumstances were. And he took care of his victims, and that meant a lot to the people he dealt with. But Kevin truly was an exceptional cop in every level, as was Lee. And we miss him greatly, but he is off to a second career as well, and is doing an exceptional job, continuing with his investigative background skills in his second career. So, we can't thank him enough for the time that he has brought to us and served with HPD. So, I also have a certificate of appreciation from the town to Kevin Knuckles for 32-years of loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of the town of Herndon, and for your outstanding contributions to the quality of life in the Herndon community. August 1986 to July 2018.
Thank you. So, congratulations. Are there any comments from the council?
I just--
Oh, I'm sorry. There's one more. Go ahead. Go ahead, Chief.
We also--
Oh, I forgot about that. I'm sorry.
We also presented Kevin with his shadow box as well. We call it a box. It's actually a frame. But I was making fun of Kevin because he's here long enough to have a brown patch when Herndon actually had brown uniforms. So, this really is an encapsulation, again, of his life and all the things that he's involved in. He didn't have a brown patch in his. I've been here a little longer, but just to bring out, and actually, one of the things in Kevin's as well is an expert pen for his firearms, and Kevin was an exceptional shot. I see very few people that can put multiple holes in a spot that big. And Kevin was one of those gifted tutors, and actually passed that knowledge on to others that he worked with on the firing line. So, very good as far as that's concerned. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations. So, are there comments from council? Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you. I first met Officer Knuckles in 2010 when I was first elected to the council, and we were encouraged to get to know our police department by doing a ride-along. So, my very first interaction was with the PD, was with Officer Knuckles. I survived. We had a great time. First time I had been in a police car and really seen what you guys do firsthand. And it's always stuck with me how thorough and caring all of our police officers have always been, ever a member of our community. It doesn't matter if you've got a lost cat or a lost child, the same amount of care will go into those processes. And it shines through in everything that both you and Corporal Duranco have always been representing in our community. I've always seen Corporal Duranco. I take a picture of him every year at the festival on the segue. It's kind of our thing. And I'm going to go dig those up, by the way. I'm going to dig up every year, 12, 14-years-a-hundred festival of you, Corporal Duranco, on that segue. And I want to thank you for all your service, for your friendships that you've made within the community, and for leading by example. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Kaufman.
Detective Knuckles, I want to thank you for your long, true, and excellent service to the town, and I wish you well in your retirement or future endeavors.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Olem.
So, you were here laying the groundwork years before I got here, at least four. But appreciate your service, and you will be missed as well.
Okay, Ms. Friedrichs.
So, I had the opportunity to speak with you earlier this evening, and you were telling me about your new job, and I was wondering why it was so quiet. And after the speeches this evening, earlier this evening, when everyone described you as a man of few words, now I understand. People said incredible things about you, and that hasn't come up yet, but it's pretty obvious that you take a lot of pride in your work, that you're very detail-oriented, except for your desk. And I know we all wish you well in the future, and I hope you enjoy your new job.
Certainly. I concur with my colleagues. Mr. Town Manager, Madam Town Attorney, any comments for us? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? I said all the good stories happened at 5:30. See, they're all chuckling because they know it's true. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Okay, well, thank you. We are going to invite down -- oh, I wanted to make sure I told you. A council -- former councilmember Bill Terrell reached out to me today and wanted to make sure that he conveyed his congratulations to you as well, so I wanted to pass that along. So, with that, I will invite down Officer Knuckles is already here. Any friends and family that are here, the council, everyone on the dais, Chief DeBoer, HPD, and anyone else that would like to join us to honor Mr. Knuckles. Do you want to speak?
He'll be brief.
He'll be brief.
It's kind of hard to follow the Lee Duranco Show, but-- Yeah, man, a few words. That's me. Now, the big thing that I take away from all of this, and I mentioned earlier this evening, is there's a lot of people to thank, and I thought about this earlier, and when the chief brought it up, working over Fairfax County, that was a really big opportunity for me, being new in this area at the time. I'd only been in Northern Virginia like three-years. And a new officer thrown into a big assignment like narcotics detective, I didn't know police work. But the key thing that I took away from all of that is the people that I met over there, they were very helpful, very supportive, and built a lot of friendships over the years throughout that whole jurisdiction. But on top of all that, it's all the people that I worked with in Herndon, and not just in the police department, but everywhere, through all the different departments. And I didn't always know the names, but I recognized the faces, and I would chat, things like that, of course briefly, because I don't have a lot to say. But I am very grateful to the town, the opportunity. Graduated college, and my first real job was working here, and started here in September '86, and retired July of this year. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you for your service. Thank you. And finally, we have a proclamation to recognize Veterans Day, November 11, 2018. And I will recognize Councilmember McKenna for the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A town of Herndon proclamation recognizing Veterans Day, November 11, 2018. Veterans Day, formerly known as Armistice Day, was originally designated to honor the end of World War I, which officially ended at 11:00 a.m. on November 11, 1918. Congressional legislation passed in 1938, November 11, was, quote, "dedicated to the cause of world peace and to be hereafter celebrated and known as Armistice Day," unquote. In 1954, Congress amended the Act of 1938 by striking out the word "armistice" and inserting the word "veterans." With the approval of this legislation, November 11 became a day to honor American veterans of all wars. In 1968, Veterans Day was moved to the last Monday of October. Many states did not agree with this decision and continued to celebrate the holiday on its original date. On September 20, 1975, President Ford signed a law returning the annual observance of Veterans Day to the original date of November 11, beginning in 1978. Since then, Veterans Day has been observed on November 11. On December 8, 2015, the Herndon Town Council adopted ordinance 15-0-42 to add Veterans Day as an official town holiday. Therefore, to offer respect and express appreciation to veterans in the Herndon community throughout the United States and to the American veterans around the world, the Mayor and Town Council in the town of Herndon, Virginia proclaim November 11, 2018, as Veterans Day in the town of Herndon, pay tribute to our veterans, to the fallen and to their families, honor the courage efforts of veterans who defend our freedom, our country, and our way of life, and celebrate the bravery and sacrifice of all United States veterans and their families. Further, the Mayor and Town Council in the town of Herndon, Virginia proclaim that the town shall annually observe the 11th of November as Veterans Day, encourage all individuals to honor this day with the appropriate events and activities, and request that all citizens take time to pause on Veterans Day in silent tribute to our veterans, to whom we owe so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Are there comments from council? Mr. McKenna.
These are -- Veterans Day and Memorial Day are two very important holidays, and I want to first thank the American Legion for helping us remember those days and making sure that we keep them vigilant, and also the Ladies Auxiliary, both wonderful organizations and what you do, not just for remembering, but as a kid growing up, you definitely helped me through school and some other things. So, just know that I truly appreciate it. The other thing we need to do is, it's a wonderful time to take a pause, and I think it's appropriate, too. It's after Election Day, because everyone gets all riled up for Election Day. And then, the 11th is always a week, sometimes a little bit just after that, just to take a breath and remember the people who sacrificed so much for us, which, you know, I come from a family where my father lost his brothers in World War II. I've spoken about that before, and it's a very solemn thing for my family, and understanding that their sacrifice is the reason why I'm on the dais today. And I see people in the audience, not just the American Legion, but citizens here, like Mr. Campini, Mr. Hatlock, and Ms. Glikis, who have served this country valiantly for us. You're the 1%, and we have everything to owe you. And I try and do the best I can, because my dad would always tell me that. So, just know that I truly appreciate everything that you do, and the day matters so much to me, and I know it matters to us on the dais, and I truly love and respect you. So, thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you, sir. Other comments from council? Ms. Cunningham.
I'd like to echo Councilmember McKenna's gratitude and thanks. Veterans Day should be a day that we celebrate every day, because every day that we are allowed to exercise our freedom of choice and pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness, it's because of veterans. My husband is a 20-year, three-year veteran of the US Army, and I am always grateful for the sacrifice he has made, and I'm grateful for the sacrifice you and your families have made to serve our country. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With the support of Veterans Day, we will not forget our honorable service personnel, alive and dead. We all have one or two people we know or knew or heard about or read about who were veterans, and we think about them on Veterans Day. And frankly, today, I've been thinking about two people all day long, because they were veterans. And I want to recognize Second Lieutenant McDougal and Captain Taylor Fellers for their service and sacrifice to this country. And I intend to think about them on Veterans Day at the ceremony on November 11 at 11:00 a.m. on the Herndon Municipal Green. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Olem.
My father had a little different story. He and his brother went to high school when World War II was raging, and so they both finished a year early. My uncle George was a year older than my father, so he joined and was in the Air Force for a year, and then my father signed up for the Navy. They both wanted to pick where they went, so they graduated early so they could pick the branch of service. My dad got sent to Hawaii for three-months. The war ended, and he went home. But he always told us that he had the best hand he ever had. It lasted three-years. So, he was in briefly, but they did have a lot of friends and heard a lot of stories. But have all the most respect for all of you that served. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Friedrichs.
I just want to echo what everyone else has said. As a military spouse and someone who has a lot of service members in various different branches in her family, I understand and empathize, and I'm so deeply respectful of all that you have done for us. And just thank you.
Yeah, I concur with my colleagues. A couple of years back--
With the support of Veterans Day, we will not forget our honorable service personnel, alive and dead. We all have one or two people we know or knew or heard about or read about who were veterans, and we think about them on Veterans Day. And frankly, today I've been thinking about two people all day long, because they were veterans, and I want to recognize Second Lieutenant McDougal and Captain Taylor Fellers for their service and sacrifice to this country. And I intend to think about them on Veterans Day at the ceremony on November 11th at 11:00 a.m. on the Herndon Municipal Green. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Olem.
My father had a little different story. He and his brother went to high school when World War II was raging, and so they both finished a year early. My Uncle George was a year older than my father, so he joined and was in the Air Force for a year, and then my father signed up for the Navy. They both wanted to pick where they went, so they graduated early so they could pick the branch of service. My dad got sent to Hawaii for three months, the war ended, and he went home, but he always told us that he had the best hand he ever had, it lasted three years. So he was in briefly, but they did have a lot of friends and heard a lot of stories, but have all the most respect for all of you that served. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Friedrichs.
I just want to echo what everyone else has said. As a military spouse and someone who has a lot of service members in various different branches in her family, I understand and empathize, and I'm so deeply respectful of all that you have done for us, and just thank you.
Yeah, I concur with my colleagues. A couple of years back, the town took the opportunity to make Veterans Day an official holiday on the town of Herndon calendar, so our offices will be closed on the 11th. Or actually, they were closed on the 12th in observance of it, because it falls on a weekend, but we were really grateful to be able to make that distinction in the town of Herndon a few years back, and we do thank you for your service. I would like to invite forward for the presentation the town manager and town attorney, as well as my council colleagues. Dave Womack is here, the commander from American Legion Kidwell Post 184, and lots of members of the post are here. We're so grateful to see you again. Town staff, anyone in the audience who has served in the armed forces or would like to come forward and show your respects, we would welcome you for the presentation.
Justin will send you a copy.
Justin will send you a copy.
I mean, I can't talk. She's trying to say move in.
these two gentlemen, I did forget people, and that's a hard thing to come back from. I do want to say tonight's pretty special in that I was represented by the men and women of law enforcement with those two retirements, and on behalf of the post, I wish them the best, and I thank the Herndon Police Department for what they do every single day. Thank you so much for the proclamation, for the way the town has institutionalized the honoring of veterans. Veterans are a diverse group of folks, men, women, from every strata of socioeconomic life that you can imagine, from the rich and powerful to unfortunately the homeless from time to time that we come across. And we in our post do our very best to help any veteran that we possibly can in the ways that can help them out. I also do want to thank, great intro, you're absolutely right, the Veterans Day ceremony will be celebrated on Sunday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m., and a big shout out to the town for helping us out on a day off like that. We hope to see you there. I also want to remind everybody that at Chestnut Grove Cemetery, starting in the morning, if the weather permits, we are going to fly 64 casket flags, and that is only for that day, and it'll start about 8:00 a.m., and then about 4:00 p.m. we'll bring it down and fold every single one of them up. But that's a small way for us to demonstrate and honor the veterans that have fallen before us, so thank you very much, and thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you, sir. I hope the weather cooperates. It hasn't the last couple of times, so fingers crossed.
Totally hoping the same way, too.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your service. That brings us to the comments portion of the agenda. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Nothing's even, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Olem.
Thank you. I hope everybody that was interested got to speak with the folks that were here over Friday and the weekend about the HPRB guideline revisions, and I do know that there were some people that did not get a postcard that lived in the historic overlay district, so I do understand we are supposed to have additional meetings for people to get involved with this, because people that live in that area are very interested. Also, thank the chamber for organizing the committee, the Herndon Chamber Committee to organize the public to be able to come out and meet all the candidates for the upcoming November 6 Town Council election. That went very well, and we had an excellent speaker at the Committee for Dulles Luncheon on October 12th. They have a new director at the National Airing Space Museum, Dr. Ellen Steffen, and so she's over both the museum in DC and out here, and so they will be doing a lot of revisions down in DC, so they'll be moving quite a bit of the things out to the Dulles Museum. And one thing I didn't realize, it is one of the third most visited museums in the entire world. I was totally shocked. I went there a lot with my now 34-year-old son. He was five when we moved here, and after we visited all the museums in DC, every weekend I would say, "Which museum do you want to go to?" And it was always air and space. We knew every inch of that museum. But now, it's going to get a facelift, and I'm looking forward to seeing what new goes in. Thank you.
That's exciting. Yeah, every time someone comes to visit, that's always the one they want to go to first. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended the meeting on Saturday morning, October 20th, to talk about the Heritage Guideline rewrite. I thought it was a well-run, informative, and substantive meeting. It helped me as a town council member, by talking to the citizens and residents, understand their concerns about this important topic. I want to thank the Commonwealth, the Community Development Staff for their staffing this meeting, and the consultants, the Commonwealth Preservation Group, and Work Program Architects for facilitating the meeting. I thought they did, all the folks mentioned, did a good job, and I think we have a good basis for the important task ahead, which is to consider rewriting the guidelines for our heritage districts.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Friedrichs.
First, I want to reiterate my congratulations to our retiring police officers, and just remind everybody that our police are amazing. And when I go out and talk to citizens, they have nothing but kind words for our officers. They make our citizens feel safe, they make them feel like their needs are important, and that is so significant. Second, I join my colleagues in wanting to thank everyone who came out to discuss and gave input on the HPRB guideline rewriting. We know it has taken us a while to find the right consultants to help us with this, and we are grateful for your patience. I was particularly impressed with their approach, which, for those who weren't able to attend, was very open-minded and thorough. They asked for our view of how the town should look and feel, and they did not try to impose their views on anyone. So we were meeting as council members, as staff, and also as citizens, and they were remarkable in their willingness to just listen and hear what our concerns were. They also spoke about the format of the new guidelines, which were going to be more visual than verbal, which was something that some citizens had expressed an interest in, so I think it's going to go pretty well. There were a lot of great comments. I was very impressed by people's love of the historic district, despite the expense and work that they've often mentioned to us. We all know that these guidelines can be very painful for those who aren't aware of them or aren't able to care for an older historic home. We are very hopeful that this effort will solve problems for businesses, residents, and the HPRB itself, which struggles to interpret the guidelines cleanly and humanely. So those are my comments on that, and I will say, as I left my Friday night meeting with the HPRB consultants, I walked out the front door of the HMC, and directly across from me was Mile 21, and it was a beautiful night, and people were sitting out there and having a drink and chit-chatting, and the light was coming through the window, and I could see the ironwork, and I thought, darn, we really do have an awesome town. So I hope you all, tonight is another night like that, and I hope you all go out and look around and just drink in the beauty. Thank you.
Literally.
Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you. I also want to echo my thanks for staff for organizing the outreach. The HPRB guideline rewrite has been a long time coming. It's actually one of the things that we flagged, Sheila, Lisa, and I, in our first term in 2010, as an area where the town really needed to update and improve, just what we're trying to do in terms of preserving our history, but not making it onerous for our businesses and our homeowners. So I'm very pleased to see that we're finally moving forward with this project after eight and a half years, and we will get there. Just keep the faith. There are a lot of things going on in Herndon in addition. I want to call your attention to the opening weekend for East of Eden at Next Stop Theater. It opens October 25th and runs through November 18th. It is a presentation of the very famous John Steinbeck novel. With the coming of the fall is our vibrant indoor art season, so I would encourage everyone to take advantage of that. I am your commissioner on the Virginia Commission for the Arts, and I would also encourage art lovers to save the date for January 30th, 2019. It's the annual artworks conference. If you are in the business of providing, consuming, or distributing arts, this is the conference for you. Last but not least, I want to give a shout out to our Herndon Parks and Recs Department. If you aren't too busy, on Thursday before Thanksgiving, we have a fabulous turkey trot. It is open to all ages, and the overall top winner in the both male and female category do indeed get a frozen turkey. So if you haven't availed yourself of this wonderful athletic ability, I have not in my 20 years in town, I have to confess, please do so, because I don't want to have to run in that one either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna.
You had me at turkey. I want to let some people know, I spoke to Herndon High School Journalism Class last Wednesday. I was invited to speak. I wore two hats. I was editor of my school paper my senior year, so I spoke about my experiences at that end, and then also some of the council things, rules and responsibilities, how it were a Dillon Rule State, kind of the wonky things, but letting them know how, you know, we do things here in council, including downtown development and metro were two big questions that they had. Later on that same day, I went over to the Falsted Lewinville Center ribbon cutting. This is a 72-one-bedroom and 10-two-bedroom modern independent living rental units for people 62 and older, whose household income is at or below 50% of the area median income, so it's aged-in-place housing. So what's interesting is 10% of the units are fully accessible for those who are mobily impaired, and 2% are fully accessible for individuals who are visually and hearing impaired. Those were actually really cool units to check out. I want to say special thanks to Supervisor John Faust for his work on this, and Melissa Jonas, who's our planning commissioner, but more importantly, Vice Chair of the Housing Authority, Fairfax County. I've been attending events like this in the county and also in Alexandria to learn more about those things. And what was interesting is many of the parties that were involved in this were also here for the Affordable Housing Symposium they had with the work session back on September 5th, which you can see online at Herndon VA, Herndon VA.gov, so you can learn more about that, but that was very interesting. Everyone here spoke about the HPRB. I am in concert with them as well, with my council colleagues, and then really enjoyed last night's Candidates Forum. I want to thank John Boylan, President of the Chamber, and Richard Downer, thank you for helping us out with all those things. It was really well-attended. I really enjoyed all the interactions I had with people, very pointed questions, and I truly appreciated that. And the last thing I'm going to bring up is, anyone who played Mega Millions, good luck tonight, $1.6 billion is not a bad way to go out, so if I'm not...
Did you buy a ticket?
I did, so if I'm not here next Tuesday, you know why. But good luck to everybody, exactly, and have a great night. Thanks.
Speaking of next Tuesday, it is the 5th Tuesday, so we won't be here either, but if you win, we'll be at your house having a party. You mentioned going to the high school and also the Candidates Forum last night. It was very well-attended, and I liked the format. It was a good opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with a lot of people. There were a lot of new, young, interested residents that were there. It was really exciting to meet so many new people. I had to leave early because my daughter was in the Herndon High School Pyramid Choral Chorus Concert. She keeps correcting me, it's not choral, it's chorus, so I stand corrected. But it was really a great show. There were technical difficulties with the music when the show choir was getting ready to go on, because, you know, technology only breaks when there are 500 people in the audience waiting for something to happen. But I just want, the only reason I mention that is, while the chorus teacher was scrambling, and you've all been in that situation, it's the worst feeling ever, trying to get it up, and the show choir is onstage like this, you know, waiting for it to start at any moment, those kids stepped up and came to the microphone and started engaging the audience and leading the different elementary schools and cheering for themselves and asking questions and then telling them about all the different kinds of chorus activities that are available in middle and high school, and I was blown away again by the youth in our community, because when I was a teenager, I would have been terrified to walk up to the mic and start talking to an audience of that many adults and elementary school children. So I thought that it was really well-handled, and I just want to give a shout out. The future is in good hands, guys. Our kids have got it going on. Earlier, oh, it was last, it was last week, last Wednesday, we hosted the Mayor's New Business Breakfast, and I want to thank Ann Curtis and Dennis Holsey and Amina for all the work they did to put that together. It should really be the Ann, Amina, and Dennis New Business Breakfast, because they do all of the work to make it happen. But I want to thank all of my colleagues, every single council colleague attended, I think probably because they appreciate our businesses, not just because it was a good breakfast, but for whatever reason you were there, I'm glad you were. And I just want to share something that happened today. My grandmother always told me that the world, if you listen hard enough, the world tells you exactly what you need to hear at the right time. And so this morning, or actually yesterday afternoon, I got a call from a gentleman in town, Jim O'Hara. I think everybody up here knows him. He asked me if I could come by his condo, because he had something that he wanted to give to me, to gift to the town. So I went by, because I hadn't seen him in a while, and when I got there, he presented me with this sign. It says, "Be Kind." Have you guys seen these? Apparently, I'm like late to the party. These are everywhere, apparently. He is especially connected to these, because his longtime friend, Jenny Bannell, they grew up together in Falls Church, now she's in Richmond, she started making these. I'm actually going to read a little card that he gave me that is what she gives out. She doesn't sell them, she doesn't have a website, she just makes them. Apparently, there is one in every single Fairfax County public school. There's two at Herndon Elementary, because they're super kind. But he asked me to find a place somewhere in one of our public spaces to hang this sign, so I welcome your ideas on where we might do that. But I want to read the sign, or the accompanying note that she gives out with these. It says, Jenny Bannell. "I started making the Be Kind signs as a way to cope with all the negativity and polarizing messages that exist today. What began as a simple sign in my front yard has spread across the country, and signs are now on display in schools, businesses, and friends' and strangers' front yards as a way to remind people to be kind. It's a simple reminder that a kind word or gesture has power and can change the trajectory of someone's day. If the words on each sign can touch just one heart, then its purpose has been served. Thanks so much for helping to spread the message of love and kindness, one sign at a time." So if you have an idea of where this would be appropriate to have in our town, I welcome your input, and I can't wait to hang it up. And the only request that she had was that we send a picture of it wherever we hang it, so be kind. So next up is the portion of the agenda where anyone is welcome to come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item. That does include any general items that we have or on the consent agenda. You have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please try to wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on an item that's not a public hearing item? Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Doing well, sir. Come on down. State your name and address for the record, even though we know you.
My name is Walt Shorter. Is this on? Are we good?
If there's a red light, it's on.
Okay. My name is Walt Shorter. I'm on early fall court in Herndon. First of all, I want to thank you all for serving for us, for this town. You all have made some very good changes. I want to remind you all from last time I was here to kind of help keep an eye on my community. I'm hearing some things that interest me as to what the development is over there, right off of Herndon Parkway to Hornet Corporate Center. As you recall, last year, we were last second notified about the changes, and I understand that there was a traffic study made. I don't know if I didn't know how to find it. I never saw anything of it. I haven't gotten any correspondence at all, so I just want to make sure that you all remember us as we progress through that. And the second thing I'll...
your input, and I can't wait to hang it up. And the only request that she had was that we send a picture of it wherever we hang it. So be kind. So next up is the portion of the agenda where anyone is welcome to come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item. That does include any general items that we have or on the consent agenda. You have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please try to wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on an item that's not a public hearing item? Yes, sir?
How you doing?
Doing well, sir. Come on down. State your name and address for the record, even though we know you.
My name is Walt Shorter. Is this on? Are we good?
If there's a red light, it's on.
Okay. My name is Walt Shorter. I'm on early fall court in Herndon. First of all, I want to thank you all for, for serving for us, for this town. Y'all have made some, some very good changes. I want to remind you all from last time I was here to kind of help keep an eye on my community. I'm, I'm hearing some things that interest me as to what the development is over there, and right off of Herndon Parkway to Hornman Corporate Center. As you recall, last year, we were last second notified about the changes. And I understand that there was a traffic study made. I, I don't know if I didn't know how to find it. I never saw anything of it. I haven't seen, gotten any correspondence at all. So I just want to make sure that you all remember us as we progress through that. And the second thing I'll see is the metro. I've been watching and what Fairfax County's plans are and the whole nine yards. And we're right at the buffer zone. I was thinking about this last night. We are kind of the buffer between metro and the town. So please keep us in your thoughts when you're having your review about what to do, the walkthrough area, the bike trail, whatever you all decide to do. Please make sure you include us in that, so that we can at least give you our input as a community. All right.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is-
Did you sign anything?
No.
No, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing item? Yes, sir?
Mayor Merkel, members of the Town Council. My name is Jay Hadlock. I live at 515 Alabama Drive here in Herndon. First of all, thank you very much for the Veterans Day proclamation. I don't know of any other local jurisdiction who honors veterans in this manner, so it's a real feather in our cap that you do. Just a few comments about being around Herndon. Monday's Mail brought the news that the Elden Street Giant really is going to close on November 8th, and reopen on November 9th down in what we call the Clock Tower Shopping Center, or Little Switzerland because of the design of the clock tower, on November 9th. This is not an ad. Do you want less expensive gasoline? The Wawa on Old Sterling Road, just west of the Herndon-Loudon County line, can be as much as 20 to 30 cents per gallon lower than here in Herndon. I had hoped the town's legislative agenda would include a proposal to work with local members of the state legislature to authorize red light cameras for Herndon. Unfortunately, poor driving habits here in Herndon, no stopping at stop signs and running red lights, are an increasing health and safety matter. With Herndon traffic projected to continue increasing, I hope getting the appropriate approval for getting red light cameras will become a priority for the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? I saw someone, I thought. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council Members, and Barbara Glakis, 935 Barton Oaks Place. So soon it will be November, typically the month in which we all give thanks. But I thought I would get a jump on the gun and issue some thanks of my own to you right now, thanking you for the many things that you have accomplished as a Town Council. And this does not only apply to the current Town Council, but also to councils before you, which have included four of you who sit here tonight, or one absent. That would be Mayor Merkel, Vice Mayor Baker, and Councilwomen Olum and Cunningham. Not to mention the work of our very professional town staff, including our former town attorney, who's now sitting with you, Councilwoman Richard Kaufman. Thank you for working with the Metro Board in Fairfax County to bring us the Herndon Metro Stop, which is being constructed now, and is due to open around 2020. And thanks for the work you are planning now to improve Van Buren Street and some areas along Herndon Parkway to make access to our new metro easier and safer. Thanks for working so hard to bring our downtown redevelopment to fruition, which will include a nice new art center. Thank you for all the infrastructure improvements you have made, including new wider brick sidewalks, intersection improvements, improved pedestrian crossings, improved landscaping, and undergrounding our utilities. Thanks for the road improvements along Station Street, Park Avenue, and Drainsville Road. Thanks for improving town technology, communication, and transparency with online webcasts to watch town meetings, such as the one tonight, which also includes enabling us to access meeting materials. And thanks for the new mobile app, Herndon On The Go, which makes it easier for our town officials, to get in touch with our town officials. And thanks for the new online bill pay. Thanks for all the new equipment on our playgrounds, the new bike racks, the new synthetic turf field at our community center, and for the great lighting on the W and O D Trail. Thanks for working with the county on our new fire station. And thanks for the great outdoor tables and umbrellas on our town square, where we can now hang out and picnic and take in some sun or read a book. There's much more that I could thank you for that I can't fit into these three minutes. But lastly, I want to thank you for your great efforts also to pursue grants, so that you can accomplish many of these things without raising our taxes. So that's all I have for you now, but I appreciate you working together in order to make Herndon better and to move Herndon forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing item? It does include our consent and general items. Anyone? Okay. Well, thank you all for being here this evening. We will move straight into our public hearings. The first item is Resolution 18G 53. It's an appeal of the Heritage Preservation Review Board's decision on HPRB number 1813, which is 864 Station Street. This appeal was originally scheduled for a public hearing on September 11th and was continued to this evening at the request of the applicant. As I announced earlier, the appellant's agent is requesting that council continue this public hearing to November 13th. Since the public hearing was properly advertised, though, I will open the public hearing, and shortly, I will call on comments from the audience. Staff will forego the presentation of the staff report, and there will be no discussion by council. Comments that have been entered, that have been received, have been entered into the record. And I do have a disclosure for the record. I am an owner of real estate on Elden Street, which is in the Heritage District. I am able to participate in the discussion and action on this application fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. And I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney. And I do not believe there are other disclosures of council since Vice Mayor is absent this evening. Okay, so the public hearing is open, and if there is anyone who is here to speak on this item, your opportunity is right now. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Mr. Downer?
Well, to record, my name is Richard Downer. I'm at 815 Branch Drive, number 308. My wife and I lived there. My family moved into this house in 1953. Yes, the house that is being considered for this change. It was not a two-story house at that time. It was a one-story house, in fact, very similar in the layout to, and I wish I knew the address, but it's on, on Elden Street, where my son used to live. That front portion of that house is exactly the same as the house that was there, in a one-story version. So there, my dad added the back part on when we raised the roof up. He was constantly doing little projects and never quite finishing them. He widened the garage, he did all kinds of things back before there was any mention of a HPRB. But the, the house has literally been severely changed since then. All done, it was done prior to the HPRB existing. So the only question I have is, first, bear in mind, it is severely modified. And also, it, the question, it didn't, it didn't state in the application whether the vinyl windows that were proposed to go in the house were the textured vinyl that looks like wood. And I'm wondering if the staff, when appropriate, I'll be back here on the 13th, will answer that question, though, and let you all know. But the upper portion of that house is new since the 60s. We, my dad modified it back in, oh, back when I was in high school. And but that was, well, actually, yeah, my brother and I lived up in the back part of it. So it was, it was, it's a historic home. No, but anyway, the house has been severely modified since then, and so you need to take that into consideration when it comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. There aren't a lot of houses that aren't connected to the Downers in Herndon. You'll learn that. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on this appeal, since it was properly advertised? Okay. Thank you. So the public hearing remains open, and I will ask for a motion to, to continue the public hearing on Resolution 18G 53 to November 13th, if you're so inclined.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to continue from Ms. Cunningham, and seconded by Mr. Kaufman. Discussion on the motion to continue?
Discussion.
Anyone? Okay, yeah. No discussion, because we're not supposed to discuss it, right? Well, this, on the, on the, I guess the discussion would be just on whether or not to continue it. Okay, well, seeing none, then I will call the question on the motion, which is to continue to a date certain of November 13th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, that motion carries, and we will try again on the 13th. Next is ordinance 18029, to consider zoning ordinance text amendment number 1805 to amend Chapter 78 of zoning pertaining to the certificates of appropriateness and appeals of decisions to the Town Council, and appeals to the Town Council decisions to Circuit Court. I will open the public hearing. Comments received by council on this item have been entered into the record, and I will call on Dave Stromberg, our zoning administrator for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Merkel and members of council. Tonight I have Zota 18-05, which is an amendment to revise the language regarding appeals of certificates of appropriateness in the Heritage Preservation Overlay District. And this was initiated at your August 14th public hearing. The need for this amendment recently became apparent as the downtown project was progressing through the development process. The project had multiple certificates of appropriateness for the demolition, as well as for the new construction, and there had been multiple appeals filed on it. When that combination of events occurs, it results in all related certificates of appropriateness being voided. So staff is proposing to change the word "void" to "stay," and that will pause all administrative action during the appeal process, but it will not automatically void those certificates of appropriateness. And so that's a change to Section 78 60.3 G7B. The two other proposed changes in this amendment are to Section 78 60.3 G8. And this is the section that regulates the process for appealing the Town Council's decision on a certificate of appropriateness to the Circuit Court. So the first change is regarding who can appeal a Town Council decision on a certificate of appropriateness. Under the current language, essentially, anyone, as long as they're a taxpayer somewhere, is able to appeal the Town Council's decision. The proposed ordinance changes this so that only a person who's aggrieved and with a property interest adjacent or across the street would be able to file that appeal with Circuit Court. And this is consistent with who is eligible under the current ordinance to file an appeal of the Historic Preservation Review Board. And this is also more permissive than what the state code requirements are, which only require an appeal process for the applicant. The final change is to the last section of 78-60.3 G8. And here we added language clarifying that when a Town Council decision on a COA is appealed, that that whole process will be stayed. And this section didn't have any void language in it. We just wanted to be extra clear on that. So when the Planning Commission heard this item at its October 1st meeting, they made two motions with two recommendations. The Commission recommended that the Town Council approve parts of Zota 18-05. They recommended going forward with replacing the void language with the stay language in 78 60.3 G7B, and to add the last sentence with the stay language in 78 60.3 G8. The Planning Commission also recommended that the Town Council not make any changes to who can appeal a Town Council decision at this time, and to refer that topic back to the Commission at some future point for additional discussion. So staff is recommending to proceed with adopting the full amendment as originally drafted in order to maintain consistency between the appeal process between those two bodies. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm sure we do have questions. Are there questions for, for staff? Ms. Olum?
Do you know how many times a Town Council decision has been appealed?
I believe it's only been about two or three times. I don't have an exact number for you.
And that's since, I guess, '88 or '89, when-
Yeah.
-this process went in?
I don't know exactly how, if there were any additional ones farther back.
Thank you. Other questions of, I'm sorry, was that your last question, Ms. Olum? For now, okay. Mr. McKenna?
Why, just out of curiosity, with the Planning Commission, with their recommendation versus what the staff, why did you move forward with your recommendation after the Planning Board decision?
From a staff standpoint, we felt it was the best to keep it, the appeal process consistent between those two appeal bodies.
Can I?
Sure. Between which two appeal bodies? I'm sorry.
Between an appeal of the HPRB or an appeal of the Town Council.
So right now, the criteria for who can file an appeal is different for appealing to the HPRB's decision to the Town Council. That criteria is different from who can then, once it reaches the Town Council, if you are unhappy with the decision. A different set of criteria of people can appeal it to this, to the court. Did I explain that right?
Yes.
Making sure. So, other questions of staff? I have a couple of questions. What is required by the state code in these situations? Are we dictated by the state code?
The state code really just says that an appeal process must be established. So that could be, again, only the applicant, but it doesn't give you specific standards for, again, who needs to be included or not.
Okay. And I might be opening a can of worms here, so my apologies. But I live, I said earlier, I live in the Heritage District, and I was looking at the, the old Heritage Guidelines that we're looking forward to updating. But in the very back of the book, on page 131 and 132, is the original ordinance. I believe it's the original ordinance. Is that, it's dated 2/28/89, and then there's another-
The original-
If it's the 80s, it would be, I think.
Eighty-eight.
Yeah. And that language is different from what we currently have on the books that we're working from to amend now. And so, do we know, like, when the change occurred? Or, because I just realized that, like, this week, since our last meeting.
The original language, it did have it, where if you were appealing a Town Council decision, it was only abutting in across the street. I believe it was sometime in 2005 where that language had changed.
To say any taxpayer, as it's currently says. But-
Yeah.
So sometime between here-
What the current version is.
And whenever this was adopted originally, which I don't know when the current language was, I guess that's, my question is how, when did this change happen? And we haven't really talked about that.
I think Mr. Stromberg is saying sometime in 2005, 2006.
Yes.
Okay. Have we looked at that, or considered that in our deliberations?
I believe it was part of when multiple changes went through, so nailing down that exact date has been a little bit more difficult.
Okay.
I know it's existed, I've confirmed, all the way up through 1999. I believe it's, again, that 2005, 2006. I just haven't found that exact date.
Was that, that was when there was a whole zoning rewrite and reorg?
Right.
Much like what we've recently done.
Yeah, so I think it was part of that.
You think that it happened during that time?
Everything I've thought so far.
So in the 2005 timeframe. And it would have had to go to council to be adopted as part of that rewrite.
Right.
That wasn't a staff thing, it was a council-level thing. It just, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. That's interesting. Anybody that hasn't asked a question, have a question? Anybody that's already asked a question, have another question? Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so we'll call for comments from the audience. And I know we have a lot of interested parties in this item. Once again, state your name and address for the record, and you have up to three minutes. When the red light comes on, please wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward on this item? Mr. Downer?
I had the pleasure of serving on the Town, oh, I haven't moved since we-
Fair enough. Go ahead.
I had the pleasure of serving on the Town Council in '71 through '74, when we decided that Herndon needed to come into the 20th century, and now the 21st century. And- And we put, immediately put in the architectural review board ordinance, which was, is unique to Vienna and Herndon at that time. In fact, we just me tooed, basically, as you know from the Dillon Rule, you're much safer to, to me too something than, and we me tooed, literally, literally, I whited out Herndon, I mean Vienna, typed in Herndon and delegate Wyderette took it down there because he had called and said what, what the town attorney had sent down would, would make it. But anyway, it's very important that you make these adjustments and make them consistent with what staff is recommending. As you know, there have been appeals to the town zone application and the attorney for that group, I understand, has said, you know, they'll take it all the way, even though those houses were built after all the discussion about downtown was even started. But I, I hope the town attorney has looked at all this. I do have a, a close friend who researched this considerably about, and, and the fact that when towns, councils appeals are, you know, act on an appeal, as long as they have touched on every legal reason and, and the ordinance meets all the legal requirements, the fact that somebody just doesn't like the way you're doing something can't stop it from going forward. So I think it's very critical that you get all these things aligned. I assume that's what you're intending to do so that we don't have this situation anymore with people across the street. And, by the way, those people that have appealed the previous town council thing will not be impacted because they are across the street from what's going on. So, you know, it's not, it's not going to change their rights at all. But anyway, I think you, you need to, I think the housekeeping is being done. I hope that's what the center or the idea is and it's important that you do that and keep it with the staff recommendation, I believe, or the town attorney's recommendation, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Yes, sir?
So I'm Pat Hermus, 902 Gunner Court. And I've lived in Herndon for 13 years. I've seen a lot of changes and I want to say a lot of it I do support. But one thing that I find interesting is we talk a lot about the historic preservation. But if you look at the town, you know, and the development we've been doing, like the junk, the corner development and the building that Sully is in, they don't fit historic at all, right? And, you know, we're focused on preserving these buildings and I, I hear the people talking about the windows. And I worked in the construction industry for a number of years before moving out here and some of the windows that look more historic, wood doesn't make something historic. And I think something that we really miss in this community is we're, we're focused on what the materials are and not the look. And the fact that, you know, like, I've read the minutes and I've seen some of these meetings, I find it very ironic that we keep focusing on administrative things and, you know, we can either take the historic district seriously or not, but if we're going to, you know, there's a lot of people eyeing Herndon and a lot of developers with a lot more funds and means than the majority of the people that live in Herndon. And I used to work for a company that, you know, used eminent domain and other things to take properties, so I've seen it happen. Not proud to say I was part of it, but we did. And sometimes you need people that aren't adjacent property owners to be able to be, able to join lawsuits and support causes to protect your community. And I think that, you know, changing the language may help get past one hurdle, but I'd challenge all of you to think of the long-term consequences of what you're doing and how it's going to impact potentially any of you that live in the historic district. I don't, so I don't think it's going to impact me, but I've seen these things firsthand, you know, and I would, you know, and also, if you are going to do this, I would encourage you not just to say raise or demolish, but I would encourage the language to say alter in any manner. Just think about it and then, you know, look at this in committee. Don't make a hasty decision because it's something that is going to impact Herndon for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Didn't see you back there. You're behind the pole. If you want to hide from the council, sit over there and sit behind the pole.
Barbara Glakis, 935 Barton Oaks Place. I agree with a portion of this, of changing the, the void to stay, but I do have concerns about section G8 where we're narrowing the appeals down to basically only those whose land abuts or is across the street from the certificate of appropriateness or COA property. I understand not wanting to, it to be so broad that anybody and everybody has, has the right to appeal, but I also don't think it should be too narrow because I think anybody that lives within either a block or .1 or .2 mile radius around or something of that sort could be affected or aggrieved. It will, it could change their view from their property. It could change parking and traffic around their property. It could change a property values. So I also understand you wanting consistency, but I don't think we should do consistency just for the sake of consistency. I think, I think the primary thing we need to keep in mind is what is best for the residents of Herndon. And I think having it way too narrow, that really denies people that might be aggrieved the right to appeal would not be the best thing for Herndon. We can change, we, meaning you, can change, you know, when it comes to changing the language, either the HPRB language or the town language or whatever, you could do that at both levels. You know, the state, it seems, allows very wide parameters of what a jurisdiction can do with appeals process. So it's like carte blanche, so you can basically do what you want. So we could look at, you know, changing the decision at, at both levels to make them consistent. But just to make them consistent, so the wording's consistent for the sake of consistency, I mean, there is an advantage, obviously, to consistency, but you know what I mean?
We follow.
But let's really, let's do what's best for the town. The planning commission was not ready on this particular section. They had some qualms that they wanted to think about. I could tell, knowing mostly, really all of y'all, I could tell by the looks on your faces, this is one of the questions, that you're kind of hemming. There's no rush on this. I mean, really no need to do it tonight. So I recommend, I think everybody needs a little more time and I would recommend you send it down, back to the planning commission and just do a little more thinking, a little more study and figure out if there can be a better way to do this for the sake of the town. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Anyone? Yes, sir.
My name is Jasmin Dar Singh. I live at 804 Third Street. I look at this problem from a different angle than. We all, no matter where we are, we take pride in whatever historic district it may be or it might become. And, and we take pride, I mean, we take, as a community, we take a pride. And we, we, sometimes we go hundreds of miles to go see a historic place. Vanderbilt's home somewhere or somebody else's home somewhere. And it's not that we will, I will personally have a right in saying something about Vanderbilt place because those people will take care of that. But in this town, I think we need to take care of how our community lives, how we spend our life, whether we want to go downtown or whether somebody wants to walk in front of my home. It is in the historic, so-called historic district. And so I think that in, whether it is in front of the council or it is in front of the court, we must have a right to appeal, we must have a right to say. And that is how I look at it and I would second another opinion there, which is that I read a little bit about Trump's development in, in Atlantic City. There was one very, what should I call, ordinary woman who refused to give him his house. And he, she was able to thwart the big development that was going to come there, even though he's so rich and so whatever. I think that by allowing people to appeal, by allowing people to maybe pull in the money to go to court, you would then permit the community to have a say at the legal level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all for your input. I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Is there a motion? Ms. Olem?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 18-0-29 with one change. And that's under number eight.
Okay.
Where it says, "Appeal of town council decision to circuit court, the appellant or any person jointly or severely aggrieved," and the change starts here. "With a property interest in land in the Herndon Historic Overlay District." And then it picks back up. "A final decision of the town council pursuant to subsection seven above." And it continues.
Okay, would you repeat that so I make sure that I'm in the right area? So this is in what section?
Okay, so number eight.
Number eight, okay.
So if you go to the second line where the red starts
Yes.
On the second line, "by" is marked out, start with the word "with."
Okay.
And say, "with a property interest in land in the Herndon Historic Overlay District." A final, and then you pick up where the
Historic overlay.
Black writing starts again. "A final decision of the town council pursuant to."
Okay, so just to be clear, I want to make sure I have it right.
We're just striking out the red from "with a property interest."
So it would read, "The applicant or any person jointly or severally aggrieved with a property interest in land in the Herndon Historic," or Heritage Overlay District.
Correct.
And would pick back up where?
And where the writing starts in black?
A final decision of the town council, okay. Who was that? Was it Ms. Friedrichs? Okay.
We get a clarification on the language. I don't, it's not making sense to me. If, if Ms. Olem.
Okay, Ms. Olem, could you repeat? Would you read number eight with, inserting your new language?
Okay. I'll start at the whole beginning of number eight.
Okay, yes.
Appeal of town council decision to circuit court. "The appellant or any person jointly or severely aggrieved by," and then we're inserting, "with a property interest in land in the Herndon Historic Overlay District." And then you're going to pick up the word "a final decision of the town council." So you're marking out all of the red prior, after the word "by" and before the word "a."
I think there's some missing language in there.
Well, I printed it out, so I would have it.
So "the applicant or any person jointly or severally aggrieved with a property interest in land in the Herndon Heritage Overlay District of a, a final decision of town council." I feel like part of, there's something missing there.
Well, we, we have the motion maker who needs to tell us what the language is in order to get a second, so.
You want to look at it? I've got it written down right here.
I would love to, that'd be great. Appeal of town council decision to circuit court. "The applicant or any person jointly or severally aggrieved with a property interest in the Herndon Historic Overlay District, a final decision of town." I don't, I just don't think that makes sense. I feel like something's missing.
We need to go with the motion that was made. If someone wants to second that.
Okay, then we can discuss.
If we have a second, we can discuss it.
And we do have a second from Ms. Friedrichs. Correct, you seconded it. Okay, so discussion on the motion.
Okay, I am only removing the red writing that says, "with a property interest in land abutting across the street from property," which is the subject of a final decision. But a final decision would be left in. So I'm just taking out the red part and inserting "aggrieved with a property interest in land in the Herndon Historic Overlay District." So before you were saying it had to be abutted or across the street. So I'm taking that out to say, "with a property interest in land in the Herndon Historic Overlay District."
Okay, Ms. Friedrichs?
I think if you add the words, "which is the subject," I'm sorry.
"Which is the subject of a final decision of the town."
Ah.
That might make more sense. Okay. It wasn't completely parallel.
Currently, that's not the motion.
So.
That was seconded.
Would you like to withdraw the motion and restate it with that language so that it's cleaner?
Okay.
Okay.
Say that one more time. With?
Let's, let's do the motion to withdraw.
Okay, sure.
And have a second.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to withdraw?
Ms. Olem?
Yes.
Do you want to make, do you want to make the
You want to, excuse me, do you want to make a motion to withdraw?
You want me to do it?
So, so moved? Okay.
And seconded by Ms. Friedrichs.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion to, a substitute motion to withdraw?
Or, I guess. Let's, let's actually vote on the motion to withdraw.
Okay. Is, so it was made by Ms. Olem and seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. Discussion on the motion? All the, discussion to, on, on whether or not we should withdraw?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, okay. Is, okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, so now we're back to the main motion.
We would need to have a new one.
A new main motion. So we've withdrawn the motion, so we're back where we started.
Okay, so.
All right.
I move approval with the changes of, "with a property interest in the land in the His, Herndon Historic Overlay District."
Okay.
Ms. Friedrichs?
"Which is the subject of."
I'm sorry, if, is Ms., maybe Ms. Friedrichs is making the motion?
I could make the motion if you prefer.
So that it's clear? Let's do that, okay.
Okay, my motion would have been a little, slightly different, but let me try this. So in section eight, "Appeal of the town council decision to circuit court. The applicant or any person jointly or severally aggrieved with a property interest in land in the His, in the Heritage District may appeal the decision to the circuit court of Fairfax County." So it simply adds, it, it, it removes some, some.
So we're trying to get the language before we have a discussion.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
So the
So does that make sense?
I didn't get the complete comment that you made.
Okay, sorry.
"With a property interest in land in the Herndon Historic Overlay District may appeal."
May appeal the decision, so that means that
So, hold on.
It's, sorry.
"May appeal the decision of the town council pursuant to the subsection, et cetera, et cetera."
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Is that the motion you intended to make?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's the one you were going to make.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So now, discussion on that motion. Would Ms. Friedrichs or Ms. Olem like to discuss first? Ms. Friedrichs?
So I share a lot of the concerns that have been brought up to us by a lot of different people. Everybody, I think, wants, on, on the council wants the language to be cleaned up a little bit. It's, it's, and wants there to be the same group of people able to appeal to the council and to the circuit court. But we obviously don't want people in, you know, Afghanistan who pay, pay property taxes there to be able to change our code. But there is a speci, I mean, to appeal our decisions, sorry. But there is, I think, a strong argument to be made that this hasn't been abused particularly. And when it has been used by the Herndon Historical Society to preserve a case that they considered very important, the judge agreed. So I think So I think to remove any right of anybody who doesn't own a property abutting or across the street from is too narrow, but I wouldn't want to expand it to, to the extent that it had been expanded. And I don't think the original intent was that either. So I hope that those, that that language is helpful.
Thank you, it is. Ms. Olem?
Yes, I mean, I remember two cases. I don't know if there were more or not, but the most recent, which was on Spring Street. And it was an individual that lives in a historic home that had taken great care of their home, had replaced their tin roof, and there were many other individuals, including the Historic Society that really cares a lot about all these older homes and wants to see this. And if we had no one appeal that last decision because no one abutted it or was across the street that had interest, I don't know if we'd even be redoing the historic preservation guidelines today because I don't see how we would have a leg to stand on if, if we just had that house. I mean, it's a beautiful house, and now it does have a tin roof, and it just wouldn't have been the same with the asphalt. So either we keep it or we get rid of the Historic Overlay District. But if we're going to have it, I think it does need to be consistent. But if you live in those homes and you are taking care of them, I think you should have a right to speak up if you think the council made a bad decision and they're letting everything, you know, go too easily. So I support this so that we can get this done. If you want to think about it in the future and send it back to the planning commission, so be it, but this way, and I don't think we're going to be abused. I mean, gee, how many years has it been? Close to 30, and you've had two or three appeals of a Town Council decision? I don't think there's a history of abuse here.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Who wants to go first? Mr. McKenna?
As I do, I have been getting a lot of feedback on this, and I do respect Ms. Olem, Ms. Friedrichs' language in there. I think that, however, I'm uncomfortable only because we're doing this right now, and I don't want it to be ad hoc and piecemeal as we speak. I'm more inclined to go with the approval apportion with sending back to planning commission so that we right-size this. And I do think we have to get this right. That's my concern about this. We're working on many parts here. We're having discussions about the HPRB, RFP. We're having discussions about, you know, the downtown development and some other things. And, you know, I will say, I was very happy to get the feedback that I got through email and calls today about this because, you know, it's democracy in action. I think it's more prudent, instead of trying to not go through a process of this, and again, I totally respect what, the language on this, but I do think it'd be more prudent if we right-size this and went back to planning commission on this.
Okay, Mr. Kaufman followed by Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not support this motion. I think the, I think there are actually two Heritage Districts, are there not? And it would be opening the appeal to the Circuit Court up to anybody in those, those two districts. And I think that's way too broad. I think we have to think about the homeowners and the businesses in these districts, and we have to think about them trying to go through a Circuit Court litigation process for something that should not really be in the Circuit Court. Also, everybody forgets the fact that even under the motion as it's presented, there still has to be a person aggrieved. And I think aggrieved just doesn't mean somebody who doesn't like the view or doesn't like the traffic. I think it means something more than that. It means a property interest that's going to be disallowed or a property interest that's going to be created. It means a substantial interest. And also, I don't, I think, based on this motion, I don't think the planning commission has reviewed this language, the subject of the motion. And I think it, as a layman, it seems like a substantive change. And I think the, I'm not saying it should go back to the planning commission as a general ordinance, but I think this particular item, if it prevails, should be reviewed by the planning commission.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
I concur. This is a big step, and it will impact every single landowner in the Historic Preservation District. I am more comfortable, and I would like to offer a substitute motion, that we remand this particular ordinance back to Planning Commission for further consideration.
Okay, so the entire thing?
Yes.
Let me write this down so I'm correct. Okay. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion.
I think both councilmember Friedrichs, Olem, and Kaufman have brought up very interesting points to consider. I don't think neither the Town Council staff or the planning commission have taken some of these thoughts into consideration. With a considerable amount of homeowner and residential interest, I do think it bears additional scrutiny. And I think that we need to thread this need a little bit more carefully in there. And as it's been pointed out, there is absolutely no rush to do this, so let's get this right.
Okay, discussion, hold on for a second, by the secondor, sorry. I want to give you the first opportunity.
I agree. I asked Mr. O'Reilly, if, Mr. Mike O'Reilly, who was the mayor in the past, if he would come up with some language that might help. But I definitely think it's a better idea to send it back to planning commission and get some extra eyeballs on it. They were very strongly, I mean, not all of them, but there were some opinions that I think really needed to be addressed, so I appreciate this.
Further discussion? Mr. Kaufman followed by Ms. Olem?
At this point, I do not support the substitute motion. I think, even though it's not on the table at this point, I think the staff and the planning commission have reviewed this, that we have a good ordinance, at least on the agenda, that I think is viable, and I think it does, does the job. And I don't think we need to send this back to the planning commission if, if the ordinance that's on the agenda should ever get to the point where it's on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Ms. Olem?
Yeah, at the work session, I did say that I would be more interested in sending it back to the planning commission, but it didn't sound like there was interest in that. However, I did not and do not believe that people that live in these historic homes should be totally excluded from having a voice because it's, if we're going to have them held to a different standard and take care of their homes, then I think they should have a voice if they feel like the Town Council, as happened in the last time, did not keep up our end of the bargain because we really didn't even, the council members that overruled that didn't really state for the record what the HPRB had done wrong, and that was really all we were there to do. So, and I just want to make sure we protect our homeowners that have these historic homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Well, I have, not exactly sure how in Robert's rules to handle this, but what my, my concern is, I would, I agree that we need more time and we need to make sure this language is correct. I'm not sure that we know what we're asking the planning commission to do if we send it back at this juncture. We haven't had that conversation in particular, and I would like to see if, if I could amend, let's see if this is right, if I could amend the substitute motion to, instead of remand it to the planning commission, to continue it to a date certain of November 13th?
Mm-hmm.
To give us a chance to vet this and have a conversation, and then maybe we still do it. I just, I get nervous when, do I need to see if there's a second for that first? Sorry. Getting ahead of myself. I have, so my motion is to amend, to replace, remand to the planning commission and add instead to continue it to November 13th at, at the council level.
Point of order?
Yes.
How many things do we have on the table?
Well, we have, we only have two.
We have the substitute motion to remand.
Now, we have a motion to amend, the second one, which if it passes, then we'd still only have two. So we're okay so far.
I'm going to need some help because we don't do this very often at the DRC.
So the mayor has made a motion to amend to continue, and it's been seconded, to continue the matter in this body, and it's been seconded by Councilwoman Friedrichs. And this date certain is November 13th.
That's our next public hearing, right?
Okay, so we, then we would take a vote on the motion to amend.
Okay.
And if that proceeds, then we would restate the motion as amended.
As amended. So the vote right now, you guys are making me practice my Robert's rules. This is, it is good. So the vote right now is whether, is only on the amendment, which is to remove the language about remanding to the planning commission and change that to continue to November 13th.
Whether to amend it.
Whether to amend it. So your, your yes vote is yes, amend it. Your no vote is no, I don't want to amend it. So, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion on the motion to amend. We don't get this far down in the weeds very often. Ms. Friedrichs looks horrified. Okay, so there's no discussion on the motion. This is, I call the question on the motion to amend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Okay. Now, we have two motions. We have the original motion and the motion to amend.
The motion.
The motion as amended.
The motion as amended.
As amended, which is the motion to continue.
So now the substitute motion on the floor is-
To continue.
Is to continue. It's as, as we just amended.
Correct.
Okay. Wow, this is taking me back. So the motion on the floor now is the substitute motion as amended, which was originally made by Ms. Cunningham and seconded by Ms. Friedrichs, but it now reads, "A substitute motion to continue this matter until November 13th." And did I get that correct, Madam Town Attorney? Wow.
Nice.
So, discussion on the substitute motion as amended. Okay, so with, with done, I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor of the substitute motion to continue to November 13th as amended, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
So that motion passes five to one with Mr. Kaufman voting no, and so we have-
The main motion left.
Oh, the main motion left. What is the main motion?
The main motion was Ms. Olem and Ms. Friedrichs' motion.
I thought that was-
No, we substituted.
We had a substitute, we had a vote on the substitute? I'm sorry.
So this was the vote on the substitute?
Yes, yes.
So we're, so we're done?
So we have to vote on the-
No.
We just voted. We just voted.
We just-
Substitute, substituted out the main motion. I apologize.
That's okay. Wow, that's never happened. I'm always wrong when it comes down to those things. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that we'll sort out and know what the right thing to do is at our next meeting. And I appreciate the willingness of people to continue the conversation. Moving on to our one general item, which is Resolution 18G61 to-
Elvis has to buy his-
Oh, I forgot about Elvis!
Elvis needs to buy his-
Oh, no. That's because all of the motions went down into Elvis's part of the paper. So, sorry. Ordinance 18030, "To authorize a lease agreement between the town and Susan M. Eaton for the temporary use of an undeveloped town-owned lot at the intersection of Center and Eldon Streets for seasonal tree sales." I will open the public hearing and recognize Lisa Yates for her staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I can talk about this now, hopefully. My brain back. This would be to authorize the lease of property that we obtained in 2016, to, upon which to operate a seasonal tree sales business. Suzanne Eaton has operated that, that business there for many, many years now. The lease would allow the property to be leased for approximately five weeks, from November 17th through December 26th. It requires a one-time rent payment of $4,000 to the town, although the actual sale of seasonal trees can only occur for 30 days or less pursuant to the zoning ordinance. We have attached the ordinance and the lease, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, are there questions for, for staff on this one? Nope. Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so I will call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak about Elvis and his trees? All right, thank you. Thank you. I've seen none. I'll close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of 180-30.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion on the motion made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Mr. McKenna.
And I think we had some kind of verbal agreement that Elvis would really be here this year at the last tree sale in, in Herndon.
I like it. Mr. McKenna?
It's good to see Elvis back in the building.
I know, yeah. If he doesn't show up this year, I'm totally not voting for this next year. Is there further discussion on the motion? All right, we're happy to do this. The reason it's at this late date is because we weren't certain that this property would still belong to the town at this point, but of course, it still does, so we are happy to host them once again. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. And now, we're on to our general item, which is 18G61, "To establish the town of Herndon's 2019 legislative program. This was continued from our October 9th meeting to allow time for the town attorney to receive additional information from VML that they did not have ready in time for our last public hearing." We have received comments from, from members of the public. They've been entered into the record, and I'll turn it over to Madam Town Attorney.
Very simply, I have presented you with two alternatives. There are two alternatives, alternative one and alternative number two. The first alternative is the program as presented to you originally with one small change made on page four to number two under Freedom of Information Act. I simply deleted VML and inserted the town. That's the only change. That is the original version that you looked at on October 9th. Alternative number two resulted from discussions with council. What was added was reference to the Equal Rights Amendment, ERA. That is on the last page of the program, right before number three. It adds Equal Rights Amendment. The town supports the passage of the Equal Rights Amendment and urges the General Assembly to take the necessary steps to put this matter before the citizens of the Commonwealth. The other item that was also added was VML legislative program priorities. The town generally agrees with the Virginia Municipal League's 2019 legislative program priorities that relate to and are not inconsistent with municipalities. So it's, was the simple statement of support for VML's program. That is altern, alternative number two. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the town attorney? Anyone? No? Okay. No questions? Okay, then this is a general item, so I will entertain a motion.
So, Madam Mayor, I move 18G61. Alternative number two, because there are two.
I'll second that.
Correct. So that is a motion made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Mr. McKenna, to pass the resolution as it states in alternative two, which does include the language supporting the ERA and including supporting the VML's legislative agenda in its, as a whole. Okay, discussion.
So, three of us, councilmembers Kaufman and Friedrichs, were in attendance when they passed the agenda at the VML meeting, and someone came in and brought in the Equal Rights Amendment and added it, and it was overwhelmingly accepted. And then after that happened, we stayed, and they strongly encouraged all of the municipalities, which are towns, cities, and counties, to help support what VML puts forward. Because a lot of what our town has in our legislative agenda is also in the Virginia Municipal Leagues. And so by having a lot of us going forward to the General Assembly, we are possibly able to get more done. So that's the reason for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with this. I also want to thank staff and our town attorney for vetting this, and also Mr. Kaufman in regards to, when looking at the- in regards to, when looking at the entire VML passage of legislation, there are some things that are not in the best interest of Herndon. So, you know, in order to vet that, to make sure that we are putting our best foot forward, I, I think these are, I think, alternative two is a great alternative, but I will say during work session, I really appreciate all the work that was done because it really narrowed our focus to what really matters to Herndon, so we can send that down to Richmond and fight for what we need to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to compliment the town attorney for a good job on this proposed legislative program. It was creative. It changed based on comments from the council, and it also shows the interrelationship between the town on the one hand and the Virginia Municipal League on the other. And it has innovative positions, too, that, for instance, the ERA amendment that I think are necessary. And there are also a couple of action items in here, which, which this legislative program will serve as a guide to our legislators in Richmond for acting on these, these action items. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ms. Friedrichs?
I, too, would like to thank the town attorney because I got extremely excited about this ERA option, and I know Councilmember Cunningham has some other things that she wanted added as well. But the ERA, it means a lot to me because when I was a teenager, that was on the agenda, and it's still on the agenda, and we could be the state that pushes it over. So I appreciate the town attorney tracking down the language despite the fact that everybody at VML was exhausted from the conference and didn't really have the language ready. And it was pretty exciting. I think Councilmember Kaufman and, and Olem got the feel of the energy in the room at the VML when the mayor of Stanton, Stanton stood up and said, "We've got to get this on there." And then the, the mayor of Portsmouth said, "I think this is good language," and everybody bought into it and was very excited, too. So it, I'm really grateful that this is on here, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I appreciate the work that the staff has done. Every year, we have lots of information items in addition to two or three action items that are pertinent to the town. We work very closely with VML. We get calls from them throughout the General Assembly session, asking us to call in or write a letter of support for particular bills, and when they are pertinent to the town, we typically do that. I am totally concur with my colleagues' enthusiasm about the ERA. It's, it's time. I'd love for Virginia to be the, the state that makes it happen. I do have reservations about blanketly adopting the VML's entire legislative agenda, just because it's pages and pages and pages and pages of things, and I, that just gives me pause to, to just blanketly accept such a large document. When, I'm comfortable, when, they call on us when they need us. I don't recall that we've ever said no because they call us when it's, it is pertinent to towns, and the VML knows us really well, and I think they sort of have an idea of what we may or may not support. So that gives me pause with alternative two, but I can see that my council is very excited about this alternative two, so we will, if there's no further discussion? I will call the question on the motion, which is to pass the resolution establishing our legislative agenda in, in accordance with alternative two, which includes the ERA and supporting VML's legislative agenda as a whole. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? The chair votes no, so that passes five to one. And that brings us to our consent agendas, our motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? And we stand adjourned at 8:54 PM. We'll see you in November.